Good afternoon, we just had the Pledge of Allegiance. It's Wednesday, April 12th, 2017, 1:00 PM. This was a workshop that was scheduled after the workshop last Wednesday. And the purpose of the meeting is to discuss the 2017-18 fiscal year budget, and it's an update. And we want to begin. Accountant Louise Colstrom, please. Yes. And do you need any help from, well, from John or from, or from Charles? In the audio/video room? Yes?
Do I put it in this bag?
Yeah, let me take a look. Yeah, put it right in that one.
Sometimes you gotta flip it for the USB.
Anthony Vady, Veteran Services. Would you put that on her desk, please?
There should be a couple of USB ports there.
There's one for you, for the record. You can stack it wherever.
Here, Charles, Charles, give you a quick.
So we unplugged. Whatever our switch is, we're looking bottom. That'll be good. Hey, John. Did I bring you back some shit up? USBs. Hold on. Okay, good. One with Tito? Oh, this is all locked up.
Uh-oh, Charles, you have the key?
It's locked. Cables? Four, four plugs up? Very good. All right. So we're all set? Yeah. Are you good for it? We're good for now? Okay, good. Thank you very much, Charles.
All right. Excuse me.
Louise, do you want a pointer?
No, I don't have a pointer. I don't like this pad here. Okay. Well, this is what I have for you.
You want to introduce yourself, please?
Louise Colstrom, county accountant.
John, can we turn that one light off over there? Or which one?
Someone else might have to click her on this one.
Is that on the back end, Terry?
It's that dimmer switch on the pole behind you there, John, just a little.
Oh, is that what it is? Ah, thank you. Okay. So we want to... Is everybody in the audience okay? We want to go, let's kick on at least one light here then.
That's a good idea.
Okay.
I was thinking one of the audience.
Yeah. Can we do that?
Why don't you turn on that one?
Yeah, Terry. Okay, thank you. Yeah, that's a little bit better.
Whatever, this one.
That does...
Oh, it overrides it. Okay.
You got a different one you can turn on, Terry, or no?
No, there's a...
Oh, could you turn one of them off?
Turn one off?
How about the other one? Okay.
Just pull that one up slightly.
Pull down.
Just slightly.
Pull it down, John.
No, I don't think it's gonna work.
We're giving different signals.
Hold on.
But he's got that all the way up.
Oh, that's no good. I guess we'll do this one?
Fine. Hey, okay.
Okay, so what I did was I put in everything for, that we talked about at the general session on April the 5th. So the recommendations that we went over and were approved by the board are in here. There's also a couple of more things in here. There's a PERS increase, so when I put out the worksheets for all of the department heads, I went ahead and did all the payroll adjustments, which not only just the positions we... I don't want to say the word deleted, but we...
Basically, didn't feel removed or cut out or corrupt.
Didn't fill them, so that I didn't budget for them. So I took those positions out that we agreed to. I put in the PERS rate. There was a small adjustment to a workers' comp rate. And there was a discussion last year at budget committee meetings. There was a 1.5% for workers' comp that was going to the workers' comp reserve. And they wanted it to go, half of that to go to the workers' comp reserve and half of it go to the building projects fund. And that actually was never done. And some of the departments were still getting the 1.5%. Some of them were getting .75% to workers' comp, but the other part did not go to, was not budgeted for and is not going to the capital projects. So I put that in, in all the payrolls, so that that is going to happen for next year. And then I did a few things in the budget for the non-departmental. There were a few things listed on the SEBAC recommendations. There's a budgeted $50,000 salary irregular payout, so I took that out. And I did leave the legal and professional services because of unknowns like negotiations or settlements that we might have to pay professional fees for. And I took down quite a bit the liability and property insurances. But I did leave the $100,000 other material and services because that is a contingency-type So anyway, that's what is in these figures. So the general fund balance, you notice, is still $1,094,357, short of being balanced. So that's where I am.
And as I understood it, Louise, this is Commissioner Huxley, that the worksheets have been sent to all of the...
Yes.
Departments and officials? And, okay.
And I just want to say again, I'm sorry that I put April 14th to send those back. It should be April 24th. Sorry.
Just give him an extra week.
Give him a lot more time than I sit on my email, so...
So does...
So I'm not sure. I think what we still need to discuss is balancing the budget and finding out how we take care of the $1,094,000. So...
It's my expectation or assumption after the direction last Wednesday that then the respective departments would look at that itch or that subject, that deficit, if you will, and make suggested cuts as they see appropriate. I think some of the comments that came back Wednesday, you know, and they were, I think, accurate, is that the commissioners shouldn't be, you know, saying, "We'll go with this recommendation from SEBAC," or that recommendation, or something at this point in time, was to provide them with the worksheets.
I don't know. I need to provide a balanced budget. And in order to do that, I think it is a responsibility of the commissioners to balance this budget and give direction to the county heads and myself on how that needs to be The three recommendations that I had that were not used in this is the carryover, using $450,000 of the carryover, and using $500,000 of the...
Road funds.
The road funds, and also the furlough days. Those were the ones that were not approved.
Correct.
And I did go through the recommendations from SEBAC. I just kind of scribbled it on this page. So I was trying to do a calculation of these because a lot of them did not have dollars attached to the recommendations. So on their recommendation number six, 6A was the deputy elections clerk, and that was already done on my recommendations, and it's already done in here. And B was the open administrative position in the VOC office, and that I also did. And then C was emergency services overtime budget. And the total of that is $13,967. And then on seven, it said eliminate funding from the county general fund to the departments. One was surveyor. I did get an email from the surveyor to, about his budget, and he did some payroll proposals in that. That total, $11,340,000. The total support for the survey is $14,000. See if it's up there.
About 10 down.
Yeah.
Eight down.
Yeah. Is $26,559. So the... I don't think I could eliminate all of that, but I could do $11,340,000 of that. The number eight was close the cable TV fund and move the resources, including county council, into the general fund. Well, the annual revenue from that is $140,000. Transfer that I'd have to eliminate out of revenues in the general fund, so that takes it down to $100,000. I don't know about moving the county council fully into the general fund, but if you put it back into admin funds, it would impact the general fund about $35,000, so that's a $65,000 of expenditure reduction. And then there would be a one-time bringing over the general fund, a transfer of the cable TV carryover balance, which is estimated to be about $120,000 by the end of this year. But that would be a one-time revenue. Number nine says close county lands fund and move the resources into the county general fund, and that has a balance of $20,000. So the... I don't think I could eliminate all of that, but I could do $11,340,000 of that. The number eight was close the cable TV fund and move the resources, including county council, into the general fund. Well, the annual revenue from that is $140,000. Transfer that I'd have to eliminate out of revenues in the general fund, so that takes it down to $100,000. I don't know about moving the county council fully into the general fund, but if you put it back into admin funds, it would impact the general fund about $35,000, so that's a $65,000 of expenditure reduction. And then there would be a one-time bringing over the general fund, a transfer of the cable TV carryover balance, which is estimated to be about $120,000 by the end of this year. But that would be a one-time revenue. Number nine says close county lands fund and move the resources into the county general fund, and that has a balance of $20,000. So outside of the number five was the juvenile department by 30%. I am not exactly sure how the juvenile department would run with a full 30%. The notes that were from Director Trust was $129,000 in payroll costs and another $7,000 in materials and services. I don't know if he's willing to completely do 30%, but some or part of that could be used. But those are the only other recommendations that I have right now.
I think there was also discussion, whether they were on here specifically or not, but there were also discussions and certainly in the meeting minutes of that group, for 30% scenario, 60% scenario, you know, reductions.
Across the board.
And certainly there were comments during the last meeting. It would be my suggestion that, and there were, well, clearly that, I think, with a deficit, aside from what some of the comments that you made, but without changing the large dollar amounts that we, you know, take those out and we'll see what it is. We did that, which is $1.1 million approximately. I would suggest that the department heads and officials look at reduction, as it was discussed, what reductions they could make in their respective departments. It's not across the board. I think we all agreed to that. You can't have the same thing for everybody. But to look at making the reductions and interfacing with you on that as they work that way to try and balance that one point or that $1.1 million with reductions within the respective departments.
Mr. Chair.
However they choose to do that. That's my suggestion.
Thank you. Did we, with the exception of the Sheriff's Department, did we agree that there would not be across-the-board cuts if we had to go that route?
I don't know that we agreed, but I think we talked that it wasn't realistic to say that you can do anything, given all the different departments.
Okay, thank you for that clarification.
And make it the same for everybody.
Okay, and one more quick question. Just rewinding a little bit, is there something with PERS that we're not aware of that perhaps was unexpected?
Every two years, the PERS board changes the PERS rate, and this is the, this year is the second year of the previous PERS rate. So it is scheduled to July 1st increase for anybody who is actually on PERS.
So can you make an estimate how that might affect the 1.1?
It's already in there.
It's already in.
It is, excuse me.
After that, I sent, Louise, when we sat down, you know, with the actual percent increases depending upon was it tier one, tier two, whatever, and the total was approximately 100, from what I recall, $150,000, and general fund was about half of that, from my memory.
Seventy-something.
Yeah, something like that.
I haven't figured the exact dollar amount, but it's...
But that's already been...
But it's already all in there, yes.
Because it was a known...
It's a known payroll adjustment.
Expense.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Commissioner Gold?
I'm just thinking that process might work where the departments go back and do whatever they can do, and then we come back and look at this again. Is that what you're envisioning?
That's what I would suggest, yes. But not in three weeks, but, you know, correct, very, very soon, correct. Or with that guidance, to do that. And I say it was discussed or certainly reasonably suggested in the meeting last week that it shouldn't be the board that says you will do, you know, go down to a four-day week, or you will do this, or you will do that. It was, hey, give us the sheets, you know, with some guidance as far as the magnitude of the cuts, and let us see what we can do. Let us be the ones that decide that, not the board.
So what you're doing is saying this is a starting point, and if it doesn't come up the 1.1, then we're gonna have to do something else.
Well, I would say, you know, then we would have to go further, but I would say that to approach the savings of the 1.1 in that direction, correct, versus just say, okay, so we have two big dump dollars here that we'll use these funds, put them back. That was what we didn't want to do, or the direction not to do last week. And I think these two sheets have helped see better...
Right.
You know, where those costs are. At least it was, it was help for me.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to present to the board, and I think something that will add to the discussion here.
Commissioner Boyce?
Thank you. I have three different options, three different proposals that balances the budget that I'm going to present to, if you wouldn't mind handing these down for me. And it might even be possible to ask for board action today, one way or the other.
Now, this is a workshop.
Well, maybe a consensus. There's three of them, one for Council Huddle as well. Now, let's see, I gave you one. So just a brief, excuse me, brief summary on each one. This starts with the 1.1 million from Mrs. Colstrom, the shortfall there.
Is that the same sheet, Commissioner Boyce?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
And it's a combination that I've worked up that is with the SEBAC proposal, and I want to give that some really strong affirmation, as well as the tremendous work that Mrs. Colstrom has done. Obviously, the option of using the road funds and using the carryover, either in combinations or one or the other, is critically important to what we're faced with in the next budget. And there's been a lot of discussion on yes, no, maybe, heavens no, et cetera. I was really surprised last meeting we had that, if I understood correctly, that my fellow board members recommended that we not use any of the carryover. And I'm still trying to come to grips with that and how that serves the best interest of the people of this county. That's money that's already been allocated, collected, and targeted for the services that we have to provide as commissioners or that we have to support to provide. So these proposals, based on how critically important I think it is to use a carryover, sometimes referenced as a surplus, I don't know if that's the proper term, but I think everybody knows what we're talking about here. By the way, if anybody needs a copy of this, I can sure provide that. I do have a couple extra here. But the bottom line is, all three of these proposals balance the budget. And the first one, if the board wouldn't indulge me here, is about $700,000 of the carryover between 70 and 75% is on the table. This is my preferred option, by the way, number one, and that would be $400,000 added to the budget from road fund reserves, which is, which was supported, needless to say, by both county accountant and the Citizens Budget Advisory Committee. Those two figures, the 694 and the $400,000, gets us to the shortfall, the 1.1 million. If you go to, and I can answer questions on this if you have any. Chair Huxley and Commissioner Gold, the second proposal is, also uses about, actually about 90% of the carryover, so it's 800 and almost 900,000, but it does leave a little bit. And it goes with 3% to the total general fund contribution as deductions. It remains, as does proposal one, with a 5% cut in materials and services. And it also, yeah, 3% across the board of everybody's budget, except for the sheriff. And obviously, these proposals could use some refinement, but generally, if I'm wrong, the math works out fairly well. Although I apologize, I just got it to you a couple of hours ago. But I think there are some prudent options here. The third one starts with the same $1.1 million shortfall. It factors in $130,000 for county accountant, excuse me, I'm sorry, county administrator, forgive me, which I remain very much against. And I, in fact, I'll hand out, I had the option, excuse me, the opportunity to spend time with Commissioners Leann Thompson from Clatsop County, and also, at the same time, about a 45-minute meeting with Commissioner May Hudson of Jefferson County. And they couldn't have been more helpful and interested in offering some information on that, so I won't bog you down, but I'm going to do a handout here. And basically, what it says is that Clatsop County's had nine different county managers in the last 15 years. They seem to have some stability right now, but pass those down if you would, please, Mr. Chair. And the reason the Jefferson County Commissioner, excuse me, city, county administrator is so successful is because he moved down from Washington, and he loves it there, and he's working for a very reasonable fee, and he just has a tremendous reputation, and they're going to do everything they can to hang on to him. We can talk more about that later, if you like. So back to proposal number three. I budgeted in with the help of some wise people, $130,000 salary package, but that also takes in addition the 70% of the carryover for about $700,000 also. And then the big one is 7.5% cuts across the board to the county departments. So I appreciate your consideration on that. Back to the work that the Citizens Budget Advisory Committee made and the work the county accountant has made. This is a combination, and I'm trying to do everything I possibly can with the council, some very wise people, to buy us some time till we figure out how we're going to raise revenue. And that is the biggest thing that's facing this board, other than public safety. And I have a list of priorities that I'll, perhaps later on in this meeting, offer you. But that's the work before us, and we have some opportunities to turn this disadvantage into our advantage. And I think number one or two is some that has some very sound merit. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Did you have any questions for Commissioner Boyce, Commissioner Gold?
Hmm, I'm just thinking if we were to take instead of 7.5, take 10%, because already we've been talking about 30% cuts, just make that as kind of a goal for the departments to see what they could do with that. And the total budget is what, so 10% would be what? My eyeballs don't work too well.
If you're going to use this...
If we took this $7 million figure... So that'd be about $700,000.
But there's not a lot of cuts you can make to this 600, this 365,000.
What was that?
There's not a lot of cuts you can make to the 365,000. It's other requirements. There's a lot of dollars in there that cannot be changed, so...
Oh, on the 365?
Yeah.
Okay. And so the $7,500,000 here, you couldn't take a true 10% of that, is what, is that what you're saying?
Yes.
You'd have to exclude the 365, so that would bring it down to about, what?
Six.
Six.
Six-six.
Yeah. So that would be 660,000. Just a thought.
What was the percent you were thinking of again there?
Maybe 10% instead of 7.5. I was just looking at your last... If we did that and then took some from the carryover, I think we could hit it.
We're asking the department heads to, in that case, to finance a county administrator.
I'm sorry, what was that?
Yeah, you heard me. I'm sorry, county administrator. I think that that's in that...
Possibly, there might be other ways of financing a county administrator, so...
Look at the Sheriff's Department, they're managing their 40 people, the road departments managing their 20, give or take. You know, obviously, my position, my point is, what's left to manage? So...
So I just want to remind you, there's already a 3% cut in these figures, so what you're saying is a total of a 13% cut, not a 10% cut.
That's not what I'm saying.
I mean, that's...
Right.
If you say 10%, you're actually, because there's already 3% taken on all of these figures.
On the $130,000 that Commissioner Boyce has here, he's adding it to that. Now, I had understood, you know, at least from the mechanics that we had discussed, that you had increased the commissioner costs to all reflect full-time salaried commissioners.
I did, but that's not in the general fund. That's outside the general fund and fund number 111. However, the impact of the fees... However, the impact of the fees has not been calculated yet.
It can't be.
Because I need to have department budgets before I could spread those fees, so I don't know what the impact of the general fund will be from different scenarios. Like if you took the CBAC's recommendation number eight, it's almost, it's over $70,000 of county council to go back to admin fees. So that's going to have an impact on the general fund and on everybody's budget, too. So, and then putting in full budgets for all three commissioners, which is not the case for this year.
Correct.
It increased those fees also.
But that was a means for funding.
But I don't know, but the spread is based on everybody's budget. So I, I mean, I could calculate it every two days every time it gets changed, but it's really hard to keep up with something like that.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Boyce?
Yeah, instantly, all three of these proposals consolidate block office with finance. I think that's almost inevitable where we're headed, I believe. Thank you.
Well, I think they're headed for more consolidation than just that, Commissioner, but...
Okay.
I don't think that was a monetary, there was no monetary change from consolidation.
Not at this time, because I already took that position out.
Correct.
And there could be some additional costs because of moving and then renovating the spaces that we leave to be able to rent those spaces. So there'll be some costs associated with that.
That's kind of another subject, though. I'm not convinced at all we need to move. You know, it's a bigger office, but time will tell.
I think the point that was being made there, though, is that that cost is already the 20, I think it was 28,000 or whatever it was, has been taken into account and consolidation was not...
Big monetary gain.
It was, no, it was not even in the, basically, the scenario or the picture or in the equation from a monetary standpoint.
I understand. You look like you're hesitating this.
I have not, once again, have not done the admin fees spread in a new way. So what this reflects is this year's admin fees without any adjustments yet. So the 28,000 really isn't hitting here yet, but neither is the increase in the commissioners that was almost a wash, I think. So there's, in a way, it is included in here and, but I have not spread admin fees yet to the general fund for this year, for this budget year.
We can certainly go on the concept, the consolidation's probably going to save some money long-term.
Oh, I don't think there's any question, but that's not part of the dollar amounts because we just don't know.
We're in agreement.
So proposal number one from Commissioner Boyce was basically leaving the status quo budget, but moving things back that we had just moved out or, you know, directed to move out last Wednesday.
I think there's a little bit of difference. It was 500,000 from the road fund instead of 400,000.
Well, true, but minor. Okay, but it was taking two items and moving them back to go back to a status quo budget effectively.
It's not a status quo budget. A bunch of adjustments have already been made, so it's not a status quo. Status quo to this, but it's not status quo to what we started with.
But...
Status quo would be this year's budget and just doing these two things, and that's not correct. Because there's a lot of adjustments to this.
But not from a personnel standpoint?
Yes, to a personnel standpoint, because it has two...
Well, true, the two that you said, but those weren't staffed anyway, but they were being, or had not been, they were budgeted.
They're budgeted, status quo budget.
Correct, correct. Again, Commissioner Boyce's question on proposal number two, was it 200,000 was basically a 3% of the total general fund contribution? Was that across the board or unknown, basically, but just 3% or something?
Across the board.
Across the board. But we know that, I think, in many of the law enforcement issues or scenarios there, that's not going to be the case or probably will not be the case, correct or incorrect?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay.
Yeah, that's the problem with doing it across the board, because every department's a little different, so...
We'll figure out a way to make that the exception, though.
Okay.
That's part of the refinement.
The, I had also, and it's not to get off on a side subject too much, but I'd sent Louise, or the accountant, a question this morning or late this morning, on some of these revenues, especially for law enforcement, that's on the 2000, it's on the, well, this sheet that's up there now on the screen. That came out, as I recall, about 670,000, 680,000 for those, the ones from the sheriff, criminal, civil, down to sheriff 911 dispatch.
Okay, the yellow part?
Yeah, is yours yellow? Okay, yours is yellow, okay.
But what you have still includes the search and rescue, these three, and the corrections. So when you're, the number that you're showing has the revenues from all of those. That's what you asked me for, was eight departments.
I think there was eight here. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, seven or eight.
Yeah. But those, that number that you just said is not what's up here, because it includes the revenues from search and rescue, marine, forest, and adult parole and probation. Your sheet does.
Oh, you say your sheet, this sheet?
That sheet I gave you this morning, yes. The sheet that I, the numbers that I gave you this morning on the revenues for the eight departments of the sheriff.
Okay, was that after I emailed you this morning?
Yes.
Okay, I didn't, I haven't looked at that then.
Oh, okay.
Okay, that's where I'm, okay.
Could you make sure I get a copy, please?
So is this the same as that? Because I just printed this off this morning.
Yeah, these are, this is what you had been sent out to everyone, basically.
When you said the revenues was 7, 8,000, $100,000.
I just added those.
It includes more departments than these, doesn't it?
No, I added those up and that's what that came up to when I added...
Seven. Okay.
When I added those up, it came up to about 700, 650 to 700.
Okay.
Okay. My question was, was there more than that? But that's what you emailed me back then, some information?
Yeah, there would be more than that, because what I gave you had all those eight departments on it, not just four of them.
Okay, you're saying four with figures. I saw, you know, eight, some had figures, some didn't.
Yeah.
Okay, so you're saying the others may have dollar amounts also?
Well, of course, all eight of them had revenues within those departments.
Okay.
Four of those departments are not included in these figures.
Okay, okay. So the total revenue figure, which down at the bottom of this sheet is 1,517,592, will the total revenue figure be larger than that?
If you kept those departments within the general fund, but we've already moved them out.
Okay, okay. Okay.
The question you asked me this morning really didn't have anything to do with the budget. It was, that I could tell, it was more of a...
More, well, it's funding totals, correct? Okay, but not general fund totals?
No.
Well, I'm, again, I'm not for simply just moving surplus carryover back in to balance the budget.
You're on three?
Well, I'm looking, you know, at three or certainly, you know, one is that case, but more so two is that case. And three is that case, but to a slightly lesser degree. And the amount of being, you know, moved from, you know, back from carry, carryover back into the budget.
So Chair Huxley, I just have one question. Are you for not moving any of the carryover?
I am at this point, yes. Looking at just not here, you know, in front of us and getting, you know, like going into next year with some reserves or carry forward also, yes.
Well, I definitely think there should be some reserves. I'm not sure whether all of it should go over, so...
So, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Boyce?
Maybe you just explained it, but just for the interest of clarity, why would you not want to carry that forward?
Just for that reason.
For the reason, say again for me.
For, what has happened for the last decade, two decades, certainly the last decade, is that as soon as the county, because it was basically, as soon as you get it in, spend it. And even on reserves from last year, someone expected came in or was a year before, I forget now. But it was, don't put some of those into a reserve for future maintenance, for future, you know, equipment, for future IT hardware, infrastructure support, for future vehicles within the road department, you know, within a fleet of vehicles, which to use some of that for actually...
But we're just talking carryover now.
Pardon me?
Excuse me, I'm sorry. We're just talking carryover or now we're both...
Well, this would be talking, you know, talking carryover, to use some of it in longer-range planning towards that end versus just spend it and forget about the reality of other costs that you're, you know, being faced with, whether you like it or not, on a year-to-year basis. And that would be, you know, in upgrading infrastructure, five-year plans that we're, you know, looking at here, even from the accountant, we're looking at it from the IT department.
Okay, but the people that paid that money, expect the services if you, I appreciate the opportunity for a discussion here. That money's already been budgeted. We're a critical mass here and they don't anticipate, in my view, that it's going to be put in for a future rainy day. It's quite the storm we have right now, and so I'm just going to ask you to reconsider that. I've offered some proposals that don't take it all, don't use it all, is what it was intended for. But I just, I can't imagine why we wouldn't want to wisely, and I appreciate your comment about past boards. I don't know how accurate that is. I think we've had some very good past, maybe most of them have been good commissioners. But now we're left with the duty and the responsibility to step up to the plate and figure this out. We have a million dollars there and it has got to be put, in my view, the right spot, and that's what the taxpayer is intended for, and that's what it was collected for. And I can talk more, but I think you get the point.
And I hope you get my point.
Okay. So you're afraid if we put in a 2018, 19 budget, it's going to be, it'll be wasted if we don't? I'm just shocked by that.
Mr. Chair, could I just bring something up? I'm going to relate this...
Commissioner Gold?
I'm going to relate this to the port of Brookings Harbor. Right now, we have all of this maintenance, deferred maintenance, that cannot be taken care of because there was no forethought or contingency fund put forth. And I think it's really important to have a contingency fund, because stuff happens.
This buys us time. Again, I appreciate the discussion. You know, the port of Gold Beach has a million dollars in the bank because they've been incredibly well managed. I'm not saying the port of Brookings hasn't, it's maybe...
Oh, there's some things in the past that were not...
I understand, I just don't want to point fingers, but the point is, excuse me, is that we're trying to buy some time here. And if we're, I think then, as leaders of this and these communities, we need to say specifically where, if we're not going to do it across the board, and then I think the three of us have the responsibility to say, okay, where are we going to cut? Where are we going to cut 20? Over here, we're going to cut five? I mean, is it the district attorney? Where are those cuts going to be? I think we have to really show some courage and step up and say, yeah, if we're not going to use this money that was set aside for the 2017, 18 budget.
Well, I think the departments probably know a whole lot better where they can cut than we do, and that's why...
We have to prioritize which ones, because they can't, it can't all, the math doesn't work if we don't, if we're not specific on which services we're going to compromise and maybe even do without.
I would just like to say, there's several departments in the general fund that there's one employee and a very small budget besides that, and I don't know how you're going to cut 10% from that. I think that with the 3% cut already, then doing a 13% cut across the board, I just think, I understand what Commissioner Gold said, and I understand what Commissioner Huxley said, but I think that if we do increase the carryover balance a little bit, there's a history of carryover balance and it's larger than is being budgeted right now. So if we do use some of that carryover, then we can sustain that budget. I don't think it's using all the money. And I do find it irresponsible to use all of it or most of it. But I also think it's irresponsible not to use any of it. It's fiscally irresponsible not to use what you have available when you need it. And I don't think that the amount that I proposed or a smaller amount than that, but not to use any of it, I just, I really couldn't agree with that.
So I have a question. What percent carryover would you recommend?
I would recommend somewhere between 30 and 50% of the carryover to be used.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair. Your original was 50%, I think.
My original was 50%.
A little more, maybe 52% or, yes, thank you.
Well, the cut, the available is about, well, there's missing a zero there, it's about a million dollars approximately, correct?
So 450 out of 977, it's 40-something percent.
No, you're right on that.
I'm just trying to...
So right now, we have about a 14% carryover. That's total, I just...
You're talking about 977,000?
Right.
Carryover, carryforward?
Yeah, yeah. I just said 1/7.
Okay.
Because the total budget is about 7 million.
Okay.
And so that's about a 14% carryover. I know in the schools, we've said we want to keep it 10% carryover. So if we did say 4% of the, that would be 400,000 of the million that's sitting there.
4% or 40%?
Oh, I just, not 40%. Well, yeah, we don't want to do 40%. 40%, yeah.
Okay.
So, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Boyce?
Thank you. So maybe we can, since this is a workshop, maybe we can put on the table, so to speak, what we can't agree on. We seem to be able to agree that we have a $1.1 million shortfall and that seems to be pretty safe.
With the direction that was given last Wednesday, correct?
Okay, thank you. We agree that we have a serious responsibility here to try and figure this out along with the budget committee members. We realize that we have, I'm assuming that you're agreeing with what I'm saying so far and that we, with this revenue shortfall, we have responsibility to find additional revenue. And there's an urgency with that, if that's a possible objective. So do we have an agreement on that? As a board, as leaders of this county, do we need to find additional revenue as soon as we possibly can?
Among other things, yes. We also need to consolidate, make other responsible cuts, because we have no issues when it's a mandated increase such as PERS.
Okay.
We find it, because it's mandated by law, we have to.
Well, I think that goes without saying, and I think we have an agreement there.
I think.
So I'm glad to hear you say that you believe we do need to find additional revenue for the county.
As we need to make additional consolidation and cuts to this budget.
But are we talking long-term here?
Oh, I think we have to talk long-term. If we hadn't, if we had done long-term... If we hadn't, if we had done long-term years ago, we wouldn't perhaps be where we are today.
Okay, so that's going to be an incentive for me to come before you again with a possible sales tax research committee. So I'll just keep beating that drum until I can get some board support. Thank you.
So back to the, to the carryforward. I'm, I'm open to a small, a small amount, and I say a small amount, 25 to 30%. And I think the rest needs to be cuts within the departments.
So would their-
Be that personnel. Or, or what the, again, of certain departments, depending upon what the respective supervision in those departments. Rather than, I don't think it's, it's up to us, or I don't, I don't think it would be taken well. And I wouldn't, if I was in, they usually would not take it well if this board starts to say, okay, assessor, for example, you'll cut this many people from your department, or the clerk, you'll cut this, or somebody else will cut that. I think that was addressed last, last Wednesday. Those, those cuts, given some dollar direction, need to be done by the respective departments.
So if, if I use 30%, which I'm going to assume is $400,000, I don't have a calculator with me.
Well, it's more like 300,000.
It's about 300 if there's a million.
I think it's about 300,000, yeah.
I'm, I'm talking 30% of the 977.
Yeah, if there are 30% of a million, it's 300.
Yeah.
So talking about maybe 300,000. And would you like me to pursue the SEBAC recommendations that I mentioned? Those cuts total 345,000.
Would you run those?
So now we're up to 645.
Would you run, run by those again?
Okay, so.
Let's go back to-
Okay, so number 6C in the SEBAC's recommendations was cut the emergency services overtime budget. That's 13,000, rounded 14,000 dollars.
What, six, what was that?
Number 6C.
6C.
Now, where does that, does that fall under the Sheriff's Department? Emergency Services?
Well, kind of under the-
Law enforcement?
Law enforcement. I, I kind of put him in charge of doing it because it was him or me. He's not really under the share of the emergency services.
Yeah, I thought, yeah. I would not want, without input from the respective department, to make, you know, because it was a SEBAC recommendation, and not to take these necessarily verbatim on these recommendations.
I'm looking at the history of using that, and there hasn't been a lot of history using it. I think it's a placeholder. So that's what I, why I'm recommending it. Number 7A was a proposal by the surveyor of some payroll changes, and it's about 11,340, 11,340 dollars. SEBAC proposal number eight was, close the cable TV fund and move those resources into the general fund. I'm not going to include moving county council and general fund. I'm going to recommend county council pay goes to the admin fees.
Which was that again, Louise?
Number eight.
Okay, how much did that save?
That particular part saved 65,000. But there's also a carryover balance in that fund. And if you're going to move that, everything to the general fund, it would be a one-time transfer of 120,000.
So plus 55 one time, 65 and then 55 one time?
So it'd be 65, it would be 65,000 and 120,000.
Okay, 120.
So the carryover was 120?
Yes. And then the SEBAC recommendation number nine was to close the county lands, it's just kind of sitting there. Not having any use to it as far as I know. I don't know the history on it and whether you can or can't, but 20,000 is sitting there.
And which is that again?
The county lands fund. I'd have to look at the budget description and see what that fund was doing.
Yeah, that may be required, I don't-
I just don't know.
Was that 20 that you said?
Yeah, 20,000.
One time, that would be one time, correct?
Yeah. And then the juvenile department had given SEBAC a way to cut 30% of his budget, and I just took the payroll part of it of 129,000. I'm not sure if they could continue to operate with the $7,000 part of it that was materials and services.
See, personally, I don't see that that's appropriate just because SEBAC recommended it for one department only.
No, the department has not only 129, I mean, there's some, there's other things in there besides payroll, which is not buying another vehicle and things like that. And there are things that Director Trost has mentioned to me on the phone, but we haven't had a meeting about it yet. So I don't know if I could take that full 120 or 30,000, but we probably have part of it at least.
So is that one time also?
Well, no, that's sustainable.
Okay.
Again, I would not support, because I would not support that here because I think we can't get too tied to think that we have to follow verbatim any single recommendation here from SEBAC or anybody else. I think we're talking combinations or variations, but I don't.
Commissioner Huxley, you did ask me to talk to the department heads once again and see if they could find anything more in their budgets to cut. These are some of the recommendations that we can-
I understand that.
And I, and I just said that I, I would not recommend cutting the juvenile department 30%, but there, we have had a short discussion that there are things that juvenile can do that's more than the 3% cut that I have already asked him to do, so.
And I, I agree with that approach, but I think it's that approach that has to be with the other, a lot of the other respective departments too. And it would be somewhere in between. But I do not think that because one has come forward that, and SEBAC mentioned just one, that we want to get really focused on, on just one department and 30%. I just don't think that's realistic, I just-
Probably not fair to all the other departments either, really.
Well, no, I think, no, not at all.
Well, if, if I'm not going to do a, an across-the-board type cut, and I'm going to ask these departments, there are going to be some departments that's going to have contributions to this balancing, and there are going to be some that don't. And if I come up extremely short because I'm not voluntarily getting those, then I'm, I'm, I'm just worried about the timeline that I have to have to balance this budget. And I would like to get some solid figures so I can continue and get a published budget ready for that budget committee.
What's your deadline?
Well, to, the 24th, seriously. Because by then, I need to have everything back from the departments. I need to have a balanced budget at that time and start putting all those figures into a spreadsheet that is the proposed budget document. And that has to be done and balanced and printed and assembled for the budget committee.
And Commissioner Gold, we have that, that calendar.
Yeah, we do. I just don't have it in front of me.
I think I, I think I brought it with me.
But I'm just trying to tell you the task that, the reason that I have to have those back from the, the department heads by the 24th of this month is because I cannot put all that information into a huge document, get that document balanced and prepared and printed and ready to hand out in just a couple of days. It's going to take a couple of weeks.
I, I understand. I would like to, I would like to see or to ask you, you know, with the concurrence of the board, to have that same type of discussion that you've had with the juvenile director, the juvenile department, with some of the other departments over the next week or less than the next week, and come back with something versus us.
So if I'm coming back with something, I'm coming back outside of a, a general meeting where you cannot give me the direction. I wanted to have direction by next Wednesday. And in order to have that, I have to have all these conversations this afternoon.
Okay.
By 5 o'clock.
Mr. Chair, I think we've already been down this path. So I really understand the, the anxiety that we, that I'm feeling for you here. So here's, here's the proposals, these balanced budgets, pick one. You're just going to have to use some, some more carryover than 30%. It's the right thing to do.
We need to have some more cuts.
And for the rest of the chair, I appreciate your comment on the juvenile department. I think we're definitely in agreement there, so.
Well, I'd like to propose that I have an item on next week's general session, and that I don't have to provide any kind of proposals by 5 o'clock tonight and have some discussions with the department heads and bring those to you at that meeting. I don't think I can prepare something by 5 o'clock tonight to have in a budget packet, but-
I think that's very reasonable.
I really would like to have decision made next week. I mean, your discussion right now is a discussion.
Yes.
But to, to make, give me the direction, our decisions that have to be made about exactly what dollars are going to, we're going to do to balance the budget.
So, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Boyce?
Thank you. Do we have consensus, and she does not need to go to the department heads again?
No, that wasn't the-
Well, okay.
That's not what she said at all.
So what are we agreeing to?
I'm going to go to the department heads once again, see if they can, outside of the 3% that they're already doing, if there's anything else that they can do. Is there anything else in those budgets that we can look at? And then I will get a list of those. And, and I have this small list here too, that I have. It's even without the juvenile, it's still a couple hundred thousand dollars right there that I can still do. And see where we are, I guess.
So, Mr. Chair.
Plus using-
Commissioner Gold?
Plus using 300, was it 300 or 400 from the contingency, 300?
300.
Or, or from the carryover?
Carryover.
300, yeah.
I call it contingency, same.
Commissioner Boyce?
Just a quick question. Do you feel like the department heads have stepped up to the-
I do think they are.
And give you the information that-
I think it's been said many times during these, these proposals and recommendations that we are dealing with departments with bare-bones budgets and minimum staff. So to, to look even harder, I don't know how much that is going to gain us.
Which is the basis for my question, thank you.
Every year for the past, I don't know, five, six years or so.
At least.
And they, and they have, they have skeleton budgets. So I know that there, you know, I don't know what else can be come up with, and I'm not real hopeful that we'll be able to, just from that and the 300,000 and the 200,000 I have here, still be able to balance the budget. I just don't know if I can, so.
Well, I think that the juvenile department came, came forward overboard.
Yes.
I think that the other departments need to keep that in mind and see what they can come back with. And then we'll make, we have to do, the board will make final decisions next week to do what I hope we don't have to, to do, and the department heads can do it instead.
Okay, well, we'll-
Rather than a percent across the board is what you're talking about.
I don't think that's, that's the way to do it. And I say, keeping in mind what the juvenile director did, which I think is excessive, and I think the other departments need to look at that.
Okay, and I don't, I just don't know what, what, with their staffing levels and their budgets right now, how much more I'm going to get out of it.
Some additional time to look at that too.
Okay.
And again, some of these numbers down here, while they were, you know, they're not large, other than, you know, the couple of them until we get into the cable TV fund. You know, those were larger numbers there. But, but that's what I would suggest at this point, that you go back.
I can do that.
And get your arm twisting skills.
Well, no, but that gives a little more time to, you know, with the discussion here, with the information that Commissioner Boyce put out, with the information that, I have it here somewhere, that you put out, you know, to everyone in the public and was up on the screen to looking at that also.
I just, I did have another hand it. I don't know if I talked about it very much, but it's a, this is just showing what the non-departmental revenues are. And that's this number.
Correct, that was a real large number that-
Down here.
That was-
That's the non-departmental revenues that is supporting the two frums in the other departments.
And that really, that number-
Pardon me? Oh, okay, yeah. All right. I'll fix it. Well, there's still some fluidity in some of these numbers because I'm still looking at, you know, I'm responsible for budgeting for like non-departmental, and, and there's a couple in here that, that there's been talks about certain things on them. So these are kind of still a little bit fluid. They're as close as I could get right now, so.
Well, go ahead, Commissioner Boyce.
Just a quick question. But you are, not to put you on the spot here, because I think you've done a great job, but I just want to be as confident as I can on the 1.1 based on the information you have now, that that's reasonably reliable.
So I'm, I'm looking at this, this is 54, 43, and this is 54, 83 revenues. And I, I just have to look at it, I don't know. All I did was take this and delete some that were grants and stuff, so I-
That was the last thing that we did too.
Yeah, and it was very quick, and I didn't-
Really quick, because it was when we saw on the prior sheet, when we saw that the large number, you know, in our departmental, the question was for, for people, what comprises non-departmental?
What comes, the revenue is in non-departmental.
Correct, and that's what, that's off to that second sheet.
I'll have to just look at that one more time and see if that's, which one of the numbers is correct. I don't know right now, I'd have to go back and look.
Do you feel like you're swimming in numbers?
Yes, I do.
Poor girl.
Well, it's raining, keep swimming.
Keep swimming. It's flooding, actually.
We have to have a little bit of humor here.
So do we, Commissioner Boyce, you have any other?
You know, I just, I can kind of conclude here. Today's the day, you know, you, I admire that you want to protect that million dollars in carryover. I really do. And I think that's responsible, with the exception of exactly where we are. And I know this bears repeating, and I am repeating myself, but I think I, I have an obligation to do that. I made it clear that at the end of my four-year term, I want to have $2 million in the bank. And sure, I get laughed at at times, but, and I'm not overly optimistic either. I'm just, I'm just realist in some of the things that we have happening at the legislature, at the national level, timber, all the above, that can contribute to that optimism and maybe even grow on it. So having money in the bank is the smartest thing we can do. Shy of cutting services that are really going to affect the welfare of the people of this county. And so it comes to no surprise, I'm just gonna, I'm gonna keep saying that. And to have a carryover sit in the bank with 1% presumably, that's not good business to me. So I, I appreciate that you're willing to look at- So I appreciate that you're willing to look at possibly thirty percent. But I'm looking at ninety percent, that's how far apart we are, Mr. Chair, thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Gold, do you have any other comments? Does any, Sheriff Ford, you want to come up?
Sheriff. Commissioners, Sheriff Ford from the sheriff's office. I just want to kind of touch bases, there is a solution here. And I know during the last border commissioners meeting, we talked about no road funds and no carryovers. And I've had several conversations with Louise, and even with her own words, and she even said it today, it is irresponsible not to use some carryover to help us out on this budget. But I also submit that it'd be irresponsible not to use some road funds, and let me explain why. Over the many years, you know, not many years, but several years that they've been using road funds, two years ago, I voted against using road funds, which they didn't, because there was money to balance the budget at the time without using road funds. Last year was getting a little bit more tighter. And this year, there is no other options to balance a budget without using something that is, you have the right to use. And I'm looking at this ORS, the ORS three eight, or three six eight point seven zero six. And just real quickly, what it says, notwithstanding ORS two nine four oh six oh, appointment of monies received by counties from federal forest reserves to road and school funds and three six eight seven oh five county road fund. Monies described in ORS two nine four oh six oh, appointed, appointment of monies received by counties from federal forest reserves to the road and school funds. That are received by a county listed in subsection two of this section and deposited into their county road fund may be expended for patrolling within the county by the county law enforcement official. And it lists seven counties, Coos County, Curry County, Douglas County, Josephine, Clamath, Lane, and Lynn. And it says monies in the county road fund and expended for patrolling under subsection one of this section may be used for solely a direct cost of indirect cost associated with patrolling. What I'm getting at is says, if you don't have an option, you have an option. We're not talking about, you know, there's been talk about people, or from several people, it says, if we continue road funds, we're gonna be out of road funds in five, six years. Well, every time that we've been budgeting road funds, it's cost reimbursement, we don't use it all. We haven't come close. This last year, I think there's one point seven million. And at the end of the year, I'm assuming will be about one million, one point two, something like that. So there's five, six, or six hundred thousand dollars we're not using because of, we haven't been able to fill positions in the road. There's no job security and no, and short pay that isn't comparable to the rest of the county agencies. So with the Seaback proposal and Louise's proposal to use a little bit of road funds, that's all we're, you know, it's, we can use it. We're not going to run out of money in five, six years by only using four or five hundred thousand dollars this year. We need to stabilize ourselves and like others have said, find a solution to get us past this point. We can't lose what we got now. I don't like the idea of competing with the rest of the county agency or departments just to keep us whole. We depend on the other county agencies and county departments, the DA's office, the juvenile, the assessors, whatever. If you cut them to the point where they're not, you know, they can't do their jobs, then we can't do our jobs. Right now, we've been cut, you say we started out with like a thirty percent cut? Well, actually, it's about a hundred percent cut from the time that I started. There was eighteen deputies when I started back in nineteen ninety. Now I'm down to seven, and it's, we can only patrol ten hours a day. And the other times, you know, it's me and the captain responding, or marine deputy taking them off what they're getting paid to do to help us with some in-progress calls. So my point is, it's, we can use road funds, the law says we can. I'm not a proponent of using road funds, but it's our only option to keep us whole. So I'm just asking you to reconsider that. If we're looking at a one point one million dollar shortfall, use some of the funds, you know, the carryover funds. If you only want to use thirty, forty percent, then use five, six hundred thousand dollars from the road funds for patrol. That money, then go back towards not having to cut so bad in the other departments, where they've already cut to the bone and need to go further. So that's just my two cents.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Boyce?
Thank you. The twenty-second, we had a workshop with Seaback and also county accountant's proposal. And I ask you via phone, please listen to these people, and I'm gonna say that again. Public safety is our biggest responsibility. And yes, I'm not hid my almost, well, my deliberate opinion that the road funds are there. You have the support of the budget advisory committee, and you have the support of county council. And, excuse me, I'm sorry, county accountant. And I'm just gonna, what the sheriff said a minute ago, a quote here, we can't afford what we have to lose. Because if we do, trying to build it back will be, who knows? The multiplication on that to try and get what we have now, what we have left. And one of my first meetings, that I don't want to give up any more territory. And I'm just gonna keep saying that. I agree with him completely. And citizen budget advisory committee and accountant calls from, thank you.
Did anybody else from the audience want to come on up? County assessor, Colan?
Good afternoon, Commissioners, Jim Colan, Curry County Assessor. I'm in complete agreement with what I'm hearing from Commissioner Boyce and county sheriff. And I think the biggest reason why is because, I mean, we could choose to go down the path to make the sort of cuts that appear to be preferred by Commissioners Huxley and Gold. However, I don't think that we properly prepared the public for what cuts in services that might mean to them and how that might impact them in their daily lives. I think it puts at risk the public health, safety, and welfare of the citizens of this county. And so by the time you go through the budget committee meetings in May, there's just no time for you to prepare the public for what it is they're looking at. I think using combination of the road funds and some of the surplus cash carryover allows you the opportunity to have that conversation for an entire year with the citizens of Curry County. And we might have had that conversation already. If we had gotten some of this direction back in September when we asked for it, or even in December when we asked for it, but now it's really coming at the thirteenth hour. So that's my thoughts on that. The other request that I have for you is I sent you all an email earlier this week. We do need to make some preparation for submitting a CAFSA grant, which contributes almost two hundred thousand towards the cost of assessment taxation. Those CAFSA, the CAFSA grant submission deadline is May first. That doesn't mean that after there's a submission that there couldn't be some changes to it. But my question for you today is, would it be possible to get at least a consensus as to whether or not you could look at the CAFSA grant at your workshop on May twenty-sixth? Because if we don't have that time, then just now getting some indication.
That's a Friday, May twenty-sixth is a Friday.
Excuse me, not May twenty-sixth, I meant April twenty-sixth, because of that. The application deadline is May first, so we have to have something approved by you.
What's currently on that workshop? Is that Judge Mark Olus?
No, no, he's the twenty-fourth of May, he's not until May. I don't know if there's anything right now or not. Well, you're saying, because in order to make a decision, though, we couldn't, it couldn't be a workshop, would have to be a special meeting, correct?
Special meeting is what I'm asking for, yes.
But not, you can't make next week's meeting?
I think we're just getting some new information today, I just don't see how that would be possible.
Do you have to have the budget before you can?
Yes.
Do that? Okay.
So you're asking for a special meeting on the twenty-sixth? I don't see a prob, especially if we have a work, probably a workshop anyway, you know, even if we'd have to list it separately and have a special.
Sure, if that's something of a consensus, then that's something I could plan for.
Certainly here.
Give the materials to the BAC office by the week prior.
Yes, absolutely.
Correct, okay, yes.
Thank you.
So we want a special meeting on the twenty-sixth. Anyone else, Director Trost?
Juvenile Director Jay Trost. I would just ask that, there's been a lot of discussion in the last few meetings about parks and juvenile and the, how the two are consolidated. I build the budgets to be pretty intertwined, because the juvenile staff help manage the parks and parks help offset some of those salaries. And so the one thing that I would ask is, if that discussion is gonna continue, that I'm given some direction, otherwise I can't build an appropriate budget between the two. So, you know, it's been weighing heavily on my head, you know, in terms of trying to come up with appropriate budget numbers. Obviously, I'm in tremendous support of keeping the two married together because they do absolutely work and they, you know, they support each other. And I don't know, separating them really does hurt both departments. And so I would ask that if that is going to be some of the future direction, that I'm giving that in advance notice so that I can prepare what we discuss with county accountant appropriately. Secondly, just some questions on carryover. I'm a little fuzzy on this. So this budget does not include our current fiscal year's carryover, because we don't know what that is, correct? So next year, there will be carryover from this fiscal year. We just don't know how much that looks like. Could, is it, is there, because we're talking about contingency, and that will be there. So is there a possibility that that can be projected? Because I see on the worksheets that are given out to us every month, it says, you know, you've spent fifty-one percent of your budget at sixty-seven percent of the year. And so, you know, obviously, I look at that so I know exactly where I am at all times and know what I can look forward to and what I can't look forward to, you know, purchasing in the next month or two, or if I need to make a different appropriation. So, you know, I would ask that if it is possible to forecast what the potential carryover for next year's budget could look like, given our current spending and the pattern it's at, you know, now, I think that would give the board some large understanding or consideration for what next year's carryover will look like. Because we're not talking about what we're actually gonna have carryover this year. This is from the fifteen, sixteen fiscal year that we're talking about.
But does it affect that carryover for this year? Revenue into this year?
What would be next year?
More than the budgeted revenue. So you don't have a finish date, so there will be.
Oh, I'm sorry, you're gonna need to, if there's any more dialogue, come on up and if you would, quickly repeat that so we get it on the record. And please identify yourself.
Louise Colster, I'm county accountant. So the revenue from last year into this year, there was a budgeted revenue, and it comes over as a revenue, so it's more than the budgeted revenue, but there's no budgeted expenditures against it. So it will continue to carryover into the following year because it won't be spent this year. So that's why.
So it'd be in addition to our current carryover from this year?
Current carryover from this year, yes. But it is part of the current carryover for this year, so it's not in addition to it. It's just a piece of it, okay?
So that helped clarify that to me, that, you know, there is carryover for the next fiscal year that will come out of this fiscal year, even if we were to use the nine seventy-seven. Or this, at this part of it, yes.
Mr. Chair, I have one question. Is there any way of predicting the amount of carryover that there will be for this year that would go into next year?
Sorry, I'd probably add just.
Because he was talking about, well, he's sixty-seven percent of the year's up, and he's used fifty-one percent of his budget. Obviously, there's gonna be.
Carrying forward.
Carrying forward.
So we, when I met with department heads, we tried to forecast, I had through December, which is a half a year. And then when I met with each department head, we kind of went through the revenues and what was still expected and what we could have, and went through expenditures and tried to figure out what we would have by June thirtieth. So we had an actual through December, and then we had projected through June. And then we had like a projected final column. And that's basically, as much as we got those filled out, what I gave to the department heads as they are trying to build their budget, because they're gonna compare, when they build their budget, they're gonna look at this year's budget, they're gonna look at this year's actual, and then they're gonna look at the history of the actual while they make their decisions. So I don't think, I don't know how complete all of those are for the general fund, but I could try to forecast as much as I can what each department is doing within the general fund and see if I can come up with a forecast.
That would be really helpful.
It's kind of a little bit work, so I don't know how long it's gonna take me to do that.
Okay.
Hopefully, I could have a pretty much next week, I just don't know.
Yeah, if we're gonna be using carryover, if there were a whole lot projected carryover, then that could help us make that decision.
All right.
Thanks.
Thanks, Jay.
Yes, well, I can help you with mine. I can give you that. That was my comments, I really do appreciate all the dialogue today and look forward to getting some direction. And I hope that the use of carryover and if road funds need to be used to help keep us sustained so we find a solution and keep our citizens' services intact. Thank you.
Thank you. Did anybody else in the audience care to comment? Okay.
That's pretty good, no yelling, no screaming, great.
Commissioner comment time?
No, no.
On workshop?
A workshop?
I can't believe you haven't grabbed that gavel yet.
I have a spe, no, I didn't.
So if I may, Mr. Chair, I'm gonna hand out some information here. Yes, I've forgiven you for telling me I'm clueless last week on my discontent with.
Okay. Is this related to the subjects?
Doesn't have to be.
That were.
This is the only time we only get together once a week, so now's a good time to have a dialogue.
We typically don't on a workshop have Commissioner comments.
Yeah, you can open that door, though, it's probably a good thing.
I choose not to have the workshop, and we've discussed the purpose of the workshop unless you want to, you know, agree, I do not.
No, it's fine, I don't think we need any more.
I'll take those back then, because you'll get them later.
Actually, no. Because you hand those, once you hand those, they should go into the public record.
He's got one.
So, and that should be added to.
We're not gonna discuss it, I would.
No? Okay, then here, to the back.
So it'll be on the agenda next. Thank you.
Okay, then it is two twenty-nine, we'll adjourn the meeting, thank you.
I saw you working on that budget stuff.
Hey.
There you go.
Of course you can. Yeah, he doesn't need one.
Well, and this is the one about, did you want this? Oh, those were his three budget proposals?